Mayor. Okay, the meeting is live. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright. This meeting is called to order. May 6, 2020, the 2020 special meeting of Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. Can we have a roll call for all those present, Mr. City Clerk?
Sure. Councilmember Awad?
Here.
Councilmember Montero?
Present.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Present.
Councilmember Valentine?
Present.
And Mayor Vargas.
Present. Thank you so much for that. Um, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by, um, our city attorney, Mr. Miagira. And, uh, I don't think we have room for invocation, so let's just go proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Please stand and face the flag.
And Mr. Miagira, can you, can you lead us with an invocation right after that also, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, to the republic, and justice for all. Amen. Okay? Bow your heads. Bless us to have a very pleasant meeting tonight. Amen.
Okay, thank you.
That was sweet.
Lead into the point. Thank you.
Sure, that's sweet, yeah?
So, uh, today's meeting that we called to, uh, that we called, I called a special meeting to, uh, so that we can ratify a facility use agreement between the city of Hawthorne and the LA County Optum Serve to provide COVID-19 testing at the Memorial Center for 30 days and to be extended as needed, right? Um, so we would also authorize the city manager to execute any and all extensions to the agreement, as well as to authorize overtime for staff that need it to keep the facility open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The hours are still going to, it might change. And also to authorize the use of the city's digital billboard to advertise the testing dates, time, and location. I read that so that people out there that are watching this meeting can see what the oral communications that are presented are about, as to understand what the meeting is. Mr. Clerk, can you read the guidelines for oral communications?
Uh, yes, I can. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, the public shall directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of special meeting.
Do we have anything from the public?
No emails or phone calls.
Okay. So can, uh, if there's anybody else who wishes to address the body? No? So, if there's no objections, I'll declare oral communications closed. So ordered. Alright. Can you go ahead and read item number four officially?
Yes, I can. Facility use agreement between city of Hawthorne and Los Angeles County Optum Serve to provide COVID-19 testing at Memorial Center for 30 days. Also authorize city manager to execute any and all extensions to the agreement, as well as to authorize overtime for staff to keep facility open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and also authorize the use of the city's digital billboard to advertise the testing dates, time, and location.
I'll make a motion?
Uh, before you vote, um, before you vote, um, I did have a conversation with the county, uh, to change the hours, um, which is on the agreement itself, and they agreed to, to a slight change in the hours. Okay?
I'll make a motion, uh, as amended?
Second.
Second, uh, discussion?
Yes, discussion.
Okay. I'll allow for discussion. Go ahead.
Discussion.
Okay, just, uh, hold on real quick. Okay, just make sure. You're kind of going in and out. Okay, go. Go ahead. Discussion, Councilmember Awad, go ahead.
I was saying, uh, Montero called for a discussion. Well, I second the motion. You made a first motion.
Okay, so. Okay, so I'll, I guess I, uh, the motion, I made the motion and Councilmember Awad has the second, right? Okay, absolutely. I'll give that. Go ahead, Councilmember Montero. Mayor Potem, Montero.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for calling this special meeting, and, uh, also I want to commend, uh, Councilman Awad for bringing this important COVID-19 testing to our city. But unfortunately, the planning and coordination of the testing was poorly and irresponsible prearranged. Yes, we need more testing so we can begin opening up business with the goal to make it safe and prevent additional case of COVID-19. This pandemic is not to use as a political game or use as a tool to boost your political advantage. Our staff should not know about this testing site when supplies arrive at Memorial Center, uh, Berry End World Sports Center, addressed to Councilman Awad. Testing site was popularized to the news media and social media without giving the council members proper notice or even getting approval to the entire city council. Yes, the city manager was giving authority under the COVID-19 city emergency, but he was the only that received that authority. Okay? And the city manager also didn't know until the supplies were there and when the staff called to figure it out what was these supplies was for. So again, the city elect five public officials, council members, to make the necessary arrangement, rules, and laws to govern our city on the best interest of the Hawthorne resident and staff. They did not elect just Mr. Awad and his consultants to deliver service to our city. We, the public official and the staff are responsible for bringing service to this city. And I command Mr. Awad again for bringing this service, but we should all be on the same page so we were not receiving calls and that we don't know what was going on. And then we find out through what? Through Twitter, to Daily Breeze, and to even Channel 2, that was announcing that Hawthorne was going to be a site on May 6th, when we didn't even approve anything in this council, when now even today is when we're going to approve the agreement with the county and the city of Hawthorne. So, again, I am very disappointed on how this important COVID-19 test came about. The planning was deliberated down in secret for political gain without giving the city manager, the Park and Racks director, and the Chief Ishi proper time to make the necessary arrangements for public safety and for other foreseen events. We all watch the news and know that testing sites have to be done correctly and utmost safe, in a safe way, not 24-hour notice to our staff and to the public. Yes, we need more testing, but did we took in consideration the potential impact of, in our residents and staff that may be exposed to the virus because of the open of this testing site so quickly could put life at risk? This is not just a driving-through test, like the South Bay Gallery, because it is a drive-through. Individual have to go inside of this sports center and get out of their car and have the test done. So we cannot control who's coming to our cities that may have been exposed to the virus. Because this test is not just for the city of Hawthorne. When I read Mr. Awad's, you know, Twitter, it said for other cities in South Bay and even, uh, South LA. Again, yes, I am for testing, and I would like to thanks again Mr. Awad and his consultant for the efforts. But in the future, let's do, let's do it right and plan accordingly. Rushing and planning for political gain may not save lives. Thank you.
Okay, uh, to, to, to clear up many wrong facts on what Mr. Montero just mentioned, I don't want you to mislead the, the public and a lot of the things that you mentioned. Um, one, the, it wasn't in a span of 24 hours. Yes, there have been staff that have been working on this item, uh, including the city manager knowing that we are trying to bring this, uh, facility into Hawthorne. Uh, that's one. Two, um, in many prior council meetings, I've discussed the same thing of utilizing RFK and Memorial Center as a testing facility. Uh, and three, it was sprung on, uh, not rapidly or inefficiently. It was worked on to the point where the state governor Newsom and his task force, along with Mark Ridley Thomas, wanted all of these sites opened at one time. So then, once we got on the phone with MRT, Herr Newsom's task force, they said the need to have these testing facilities up and running is one of the key indicators for us to open and have our residents go back to work. They're almost like verified passes to say, okay, yes, you're clear, you can go to work. Without that, we can't proceed forward. The other issue that you brought up is when we designated the city manager as the emergency director, it gave him the authority to go into an agreement that has COVID-19 prevention. Now, when that happens, the issue is, is you don't have a long time. If it's an emergency such as this for our residents to have them go forward and be safe, we don't have two weeks, four weeks to wait to get something moved forward. They were coming down, it says, we need a site, do you have somewhere to go? And I've been working on it for three, four weeks, and as you know, especially on my press release and social media, I've, I've stepped everything out, step by step, how long I've been working on it, what areas. The only issue is, and I, if the residents would have known, that the delays were happening because of pettiness. And that's very sad because you're, you're having something that shouldn't be political, and that's why, you know, having it gone through, just having a site running open, which is run by Optum Serve and his task force, along with MRT, who came out today and said how thankfully his that Hawthorne was able to have this test up and running so that we can get our county and our city out and working. Now, yes, it has been open for Hawthorne and the county. Because it's a state initiative and a county initiative, you cannot pinhole it to one area. So the South Bay Galleria and the Forum as open sites, they are also open not just to Inglewood or Redondo Beach, but to the county. Um, and the problem is, this is all, they want to do it quickly. You know how the state functions, you know how the county functions. You deal with.
Yeah, no, hold on to the chair.
Let him complete his, his thoughts, one at a time. We've got a good chance. Go ahead, Haidar, Councilmember.
That you're trying to bring something to save lives, to make sure that we are safe. Do not, please do not lie to the residents saying that it was done in an infashion, ill-fashioned form because it's regulated not only by the state, but by the county. And we could not move forward unless we were authorized by, again, the state governor and his task force, and Mark Ridley Thomas and his county task force. So it's not, it's a completely safe, it wasn't political until there were delays that were trying to be held on by this morning to try and make it political. And, and look, we can't do this. You have lives at stake. This is not a game. It's sad how you guys are trying to make this a game, and you have residents wanting to go to work, you have residents that want to see if they have the virus or not, and you want to sit here and waste our time making this a game when we're trying to reopen the state. It's shameful that you go on a rant with no backing and with no certification. I'm sorry, Montero, but eagerly.
Let me ask you some questions.
Okay, wait.
I need to follow up one. I need to follow up some questions.
No, Councilmember, Council, Mayor Potem Montero, then Tayeda, and then Valentine.
Yeah. Hey, Dar. Honest to, tell us when exactly that you find out that Hawthorne was going to be a site, because like you said, even if it was very quickly done, you have, like you have done, you had the power to call the mayor, to call the city manager, or call Russell and say, let's have an emergency meeting because this is coming to Hawthorne, I need to get the agreement done, I need to make sure that the staff and my colleagues are at the port what is coming. So you could have had 48 hours or, because you, they ship, hold on one sec, they ship boxes, hold on, I'm not finished. They ship boxes to you, to the, to the Memorial Center. So that's mean, the, the shipping, it doesn't take 24 hours, probably took about 36 hours to 48 hours to ship those things to the Hawthorne Memorial Center. So you had plenty of time to come to us, but what you did, you went to the social media, to Channel 2, Channel 5, and to the Twitter to announce that, and then even you put for contact, to contact your consultant, Chris Robo, not the city of Hawthorne, not Vaughn, not, not, uh, city manager, or not Russell.
Councilmember Tayeda, Councilmember Tayeda.
To answer this question.
Councilmember Tayeda, we already have an order here.
Well, listen, first of all, I agree that we're all trying to open up the, the state and we want to go back to work. Okay, you guys go ahead.
Councilmember Awad, please, you have, you got like a lengthy amount of time. It's everybody else's turn.
Okay, well, you know, today, okay, this is, um, the Galleria, uh, was testing. I went and I got tested over at the Galleria. Uh, it was a different kind of test where they wouldn't even let you get out of the car. The, what, what sort of testing is going to happen here? Is that where you, you actually have to get out of the car? You have to go into the, to the, um, facility? Facility, and then they're going to test you there. Is that the kind of testing that they, is that, and is that test what you, being done across the board?
City Attorney, Mr. City Attorney, please go ahead and let everybody know when you actually got contacted by somebody from this, from the county, and just tell us what the regulations that you agreed upon with them were.
Um, I contacted the county yesterday about 2:30, and, um, I, I probably talked to them about five times between late yesterday afternoon and, uh, just even like 10 minutes ago.
Was that the first time?
And I did, uh, we, we did relay them, I did relay the message to them that, you know, um, is there any way that we can do the drive-through testing? And they said no, that the, uh, can, the vendor that they hired can only do the, uh, the intake type testing.
So they're, we're not going to have, we're not going to have the drive-through, it's going to be the regular get out, there one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Councilwoman Valentine?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, so my, I have a question on the agreement itself, the, uh, the facility use agreement, and I'd like to, uh, get, um, the city attorney's input on this. Um, so I looked at the indemnification clause, and it says that, um, the way I read it, the county indemnifies, um, the city for any negligence that is the fault of the county, and then the city indemnifies the county for any negligence that is the city. So it's mutual indemnity. Can you explain that, please, what that means and what it means for us?
It's, it actually is a standard indemnity provision that the county has with all of the cities. You know, uh, like, for example, the, um, the hazardous waste pickup every year and any other time the county uses our facility, it's the same type of mutual indemnification. It's also very common with our agreements with other cities as well.
And so, um, okay, so, so.
It protects, it protects both of us for our own negligence, from, from the negligence of the other.
Okay.
Okay?
Um, and you're satisfied that we're sufficiently protected by this indemnification clause?
Uh, yes.
Okay. The other question I have is about the remove treatment and removal of biohazardous waste. So in section 4.5, it says, treatment and removal of biohazardous waste from the premises no less frequently than once a week. Now, um, do you, uh, do you think that's sufficient?
Um, would you like us to change that? We can still, uh, make an interlineation and tell them that we would like that once a day, but, uh, again, their vendor, uh, signed an agreement with the state, and that may have just been a provision that was in the state agreement.
So my question would be, so we're not going to leave the biohazardous waste on our premises the whole week, are we? How would that work?
I'm sure it's going to be in a, I'm sure it's going to be in a very, uh, sturdy container that nobody else can get to.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Well, I guess, um, now it's my turn. I got a question for, uh, for the city manager. Do it, so all the, uh, the removal of all the hazardous waste and all the employee concerns have been met, Mr. City Manager? Like with regards to personal protective equipment?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm good with this. I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Clerk? Please call for the votes, sir.
Asking for the, for a discussion with the city manager. Hold on, spear gun it. Alex, relax. We got something to clarify with the residents. Uh, the moment that you found us getting comfortable, weren't we notifying the council right away? Arnie?
I'm sorry, said, I'm sorry, would you repeat that, Councilman?
The approval from the county. Wasn't that the exact same moment we notified the council?
Yes, you came yesterday, that's when you told me that it was, it was, uh, they, they chose Hawthorne.
That said it finalized that day, and that's when we notified the council, that I can't believe it, we actually have a site here. Now, the shipping, Montero, to answer your question before the mayor was trying to overcome me, was that the fact that, yes, because it's a state initiative, and I hope you go back and, you know, read and study on it, they don't have prolonged shipping. They do it right away because it's an emergency situation. So again, please do not lie to the public with misinformation. So, um, as you heard from the city manager, it there, we notified the council the second we knew. The shipment was not 36 to 48 hours, they have quick shipping. The second they got their agreement, they threw everything at us. They wanted to move quickly because they were afraid of this exact scenario happening with cities. When you have someone contact and make a deal for us to push, to help the residents, they're all time.
To the chair.
No, no, Adam, finish his comment.
Now, now Alex is going to let Montero talk, but wouldn't let me talk. What?
No, well, hey, you know, you, uh, let, everybody gets a chance to talk. Go ahead, uh, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Potem Montero?
Good. At least a fake guy. Look, I'm not saying no lies, and even actually, I'm commanding you. I'm saying thank you for bringing the test to Hawthorne, okay? Because we know we need test, test, test to be able to open the economy. The only, the only.
Alright, there's no back and forth. Alright, we're going to seize the, there's no back and forth, there's no interrupting. Guys, gotta stop.
The only thing.
Councilmember Awad, everybody's going to support this, Councilmember Awad, just let him speak. Let me finish. Go ahead.
The only thing I want to say is that, Arnie and Russell and, and even Vaughn, you didn't come to them first. They called you when the shipping arrived. So, 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 uh, I understand.
Alright, you know what? Or, you know, wait, wait, hold on.
You should give us the.
No, we gotta, discussion ends, discussion ends.
Hey, Dar, you should have called us or even sent us a message before you went to social media, to the news media, to announce this even without our consent. You failed to do that.
It was made up the same. Alright, you did, I did not.
Alright, there's no more, there's no more back and forth. Alright.
Let's, uh, let's take a vote.
City Clerk?
Okay, uh, Councilmember Awad? Yay, Nate, or Epstein? Can you guess? Sorry, I can't hear you.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, Council, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Alright, so, uh, this is a great thing.
Let me say something to Russell, please.
Oh, wait a minute, there's, we're gonna, we have, final comments.
About this agreement, because about that. Right about disagreement, because about that hazard waste. Russell, try to see if they can pick up those every day, because remember, they said the virus leave in at least for six hour in the air. So we should remove those, those wastes every day, not weekly, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, okay, so I guess the vote, everybody supports this, this is great for the city of Hawthorne. We need to make sure that we establish decorum, we can't have councilmembers interrupting other councilmembers or back and forth, so we need to establish that. Okay, see, that's, that's what we can't have allow happen, Councilmember Awad, okay? We, I don't have the power to mute you, you have to mute yourself, but that's decorum for you, you got a lengthy amount of time to say what you had to say. But at the same time, I also commend you also for, for putting us in contact with LA County and Optum Serv. I actually was there today at 3 o'clock to get tested, and you were there helping, so I commend you for that. It was a great, a lot of people were there. They started getting the momentum in bringing people, and they started taking a lot of registrations online. The people are extremely happy that we have this here in the city of Hawthorne, and I was very pleased in the way they attended me and the way they tested. And so this is going to be a great thing for the city of Hawthorne, so let's make sure that we can get the word out. And the city of, the city council of Hawthorne supports this 100%.
Amen, through the chair.
Uh, is there any further, anything?
Uh, yes.
Councilmembers?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to ask the city manager to keep a tally of how many people get tested every day so that we can keep records of that.
True. Okay, okay, so anything further, this council meeting is adjourned at 5:03. Thank you very much, everyone, and this is great for the city of Hawthorne, so very happy, everybody's happy, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.